They're using for Veterans Day today. I've made it back yet. Over here. The allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All in silence, please. Thank you. Welcome to the Chelsea Junior Township School Corporation, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. Local hall members are present. I don't want to adopt some of the agenda for Tuesday, November 11th that I have in motion. I guess we'll just adopt the agenda.
Before we vote, I would like to add the executive session minutes to the agenda for approval and also receipt of the HVAC bids, which we will do after our resolution issuing of ours. With the fourth motion.
I advise my, uh, motion to.
Thank you, Larry.
Any discussion? There is none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries five. Reports, William Tell.
We've had some pretty exciting things happen lately. Um, we had a very successful canned food drive. We had our Veterans Day program today. We invited local veterans to come. Um, we had some of the high school students, um, from band play. And so it was really neat to have the students all together. Um, we did our kindness kickoff. We had bouncy castle, snow cones, and all kinds of kindness activities that was organized by our counseling department. So the students really, really enjoyed that. Um, we also had our fall festival, which was organized by our school culture team. Very successful turnout. We had the chili supper and, um, a lot, a lot of students came. We also had a tattoo the teacher booth that the kids really liked and a dunk booth that we had also marked man. So the kids really liked that.
Yeah.
Um, also new directions and everybody's have been coming for our PE classes and teaching, um, some of the zumba and dance classes, just to really integrate the physical fitness that and show students that they can have that outside of school too. Thank you.
Canned food school too.
Uh, it wasn't mine anyway.
Chelsea Junior Senior High School. Ramsey?
Mayor Dieter will be up for us. Yes, I've been asked to give a report about the radio TV program that we have going on at Chelsea. I'm, uh, I'm Larry Dieter. For anyone who doesn't know me, I started teaching here in 2016 and I taught for two years in the CTE program with a workplace specialist license. And then because of my other work concerns, I was spending a lot of time out of town. Took a seven year hiatus and I was fortunate that when, um, Mr. Philiposh left here last November, uh, they gave me a call and asked if I would like to come back and do it again. And my work situation has changed where I was able to do that. And I'm really glad to be back. We are, I do keep up with what the state's CTE guidelines are. Uh, for radio TV program and I, if any of you would like to see this, this is, I set this up as goals for both of my semesters. Um, these are things that really have to do with the nuts and bolts of learning a camera, learning how to edit, uh, the kinds of things that you would do if you were looking for a traditional job in television station, radio, something like that. What I can say is in the seven years since I had been here before, the changes in the industry are just incredible. One of the first days of class that we had, we had a discussion about AI and the impact that it's going to have on jobs in their lifetime. As at least the predictive impact it's going to have. And in, uh, the technology services, we already see that a lot of jobs that were traditionally done in radio and television, even down to producing of content is being handed over to them. So we kind of decided as a class that if they take away anything from my class, other than knowing how to operate a camera, what can you use in your life? If it is that you have Zoom job abilities, ignore how to light yourself properly. So that you may look better than the other candidate. So you have good audio. We also, um, creativity and flexibility, I think are going to be key to the students as they go out into the world. So I try to do as many lessons as possible. It is just fostering creativity and trying to use a part of their brain that, uh, I don't know that they get to use a whole lot during the course of the day. Uh, it's very hard to be creative in your core classes because those are correct and incorrect answers. So we are looking at, I have two classes that I teach. I do the first two periods of the day. Uh, I have 25 first year students who have never taken a course before. And then I have 16 in my second period who all the two of them either were with me last year or they had taken a class with Mr. Paul in the past. Uh, we're obviously following this career path that I've kind of outlined there for our first year students. So they understand what they need before we take the next step. My second year students, uh, they are looking at things, uh, they, one of the first projects they worked on, uh, was to create an animated logo to use on the productions. So we're working on some 2D animation with them. As we get into second semester, we'll start looking at some 3D modeling and animation, um, which is a little bit outside the scope, I think, of what is in the strict career pathway that we're trying to cover. But if nothing else, I want to be engaged with these young people. That's where I get my joy out of doing what I'm doing. If I can give them something that's going to help them, uh, later on, everything is worthwhile to me. We did, in several of our class discussions, uh, we've talked about everything from ethics in broadcasting and journalism to First Amendment, how it applies to things like that. And I select some of these topics because I see the things that are, you know, impacting them in their life and the things that they see. Uh, I have a group of second year students who are very aware of the fact that, um, America is not necessarily the kindest place in society as it has been during most of our lifetimes. And they are looking at a long-term project that they've started working on to see what they can do to bring about some positive change. And just get people to treat each other better, listen to each other more, uh, remain open-minded as much as possible. All things that I think are good in the long run. I'm, I'd like to just show you a few of the things that we've done here. Uh, won't take up, uh, but a few minutes here. The first year students, uh, and this is about a minute long, but, uh, this will just show you the first project that they did had to do with just learning the language of storytelling through film, knowing what the names of the shots are so that you can communicate well. After that, we moved into the first creative project. I told them, open the door is your topic, write a script. This one was, uh, I thought very interesting because we had to do some special effects with the very first project that they came up with. And then of course, to create a commercial. My audio may not have corrected well. And, you know, these were students who, uh, were about a month in from getting cameras in their heads. And they really, they've grown up on enough videos, YouTube, things like that. What's, the tools are in their hands. They kind of know how to tell the stories. They'll figure it out as they go along and I always enjoy seeing that. Uh, with our second year students, um, the first thing you'll see is an example of, uh, this was in the first week of class, learning about some 2D animation that they created a very nice little logo for our productions here. And they are working on currently doing some projects for some of the other programs in the school. And another group of students wanted to do something on basic lighting, but it was a daylight during the first year. And this for the CNA program. And an explainer video on how a proper golf swing goes. And I apologize if the audio isn't connected enough because Dylan did a really good job of explaining it. But these are things that we've been working on here. Uh, in second semester, we will be looking at business plans for YouTube, uh, looking at the independent film business, jobs that are available there. I do want to do what I can for the students who are really interested in this as a career to be able to, you know, have a goal and know what they're shooting towards. But like I say, the landscape is changing so quickly here. Uh, and I don't want them to get the rope pulled out from under them. That's why I'm kind of stressing them. If this is something you're interested in, get as much information as you can from as many places as you can on the internet. Because one thing you can be certain of is that things are going to change a whole lot in the next few years. But, uh, I've definitely enjoyed this class. I'm hoping that these students are taking something. If they're taking away as much from it as I am, because I get a lot out of this. So I'm, uh, I'm hoping that works and I hope this program can keep going and keep rolling. And I thank you all for your time and, you know, are there any questions about the program that I want to ask?
There's some, like, TV, radio, something that's also up besides.
Mm-hmm.
The chance that we have them broadcasting, like a Chelsea Sports event or something over there.
I would love to get into that. Um, I am planning, whenever I get a full year under my belt here, having a proposal ready to see if we could do something to put together a live streaming studio. Um, because of, you know, wireless transmission of cameras. The, the equipment costs are slightly involved, but I would really love to see them have a chance to get their hands on something like that. Uh, to be able to, like you said, broadcast athletic events, to broadcast some of the great programs that they do here at the school, which they are already filming, but for the community to be able to see them, I think that would be very much. All right, thank you all.
Thank you, thanks Larry.
I think it'd be a great way to highlight our school, some of the things that, that we do here. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Um, just a few things that I hit on. One of his observations, one thing I really learned from Larry's class, one, there is a lot of writing, a lot of pre-planning. Kids have to work together and, uh, one group I was talking to, I said, what are you, what are you getting out of this class? And I don't know if I ever told Larry this. And this is what the kids started, he goes, being this guy, we would have never talked before. We never crossed each other, but we have to work together. This guy's kind of pretty cool. So I like that part, they have to work together. He rotates the jobs one day, well, you're, you're the lead, you're the lead person. Next day, you're the, everybody's have leaderships. And those kids, another thing they said was, I go home and I, this is, I think, that you, you know, inspire, inspire kids. Like go home and I research some of this and that way I can come back here, try it here. Oh, that was pretty cool. I know we have podcasting stuff initiatives to tip the iceberg. Uh, there's some of the directions you point to, but Larry has a great rapport with kids. They respect him, uh, love him, he does a great job, so thank you, Larry. Uh, a couple of things, let you guys go. Congratulations to the band, make it to state. They were super excited. Uh, probably about six, seven years ago, we started inviting them to state. We lined the halls, plan would go through and we did a send off. See, uh, the kids love it. Uh, the band did a great job. Uh, they finished ninth, uh, went up to Indy, we were probably the smallest band. They did a great job. The kids were so excited, so it takes a lot for a band, the parents, uh, just all the work that goes in hauling the equipment there. Uh, honestly, Tosh, maybe Kel, they just did a great job. I appreciate that. Today we have a Veterans Day assembly. Eric Mark was our guest speaker, very interesting guy, very intelligent guy. Uh, but he was a guest speaker. Our kids did a great job with it and, uh, I would say thanks to the Boy Scouts, they helped set things up. Hysteria had everything planned, so after the assembly, we went and, uh, fed the veterans. And it really went well, so. Last thing we did, uh, last week, we did an Inspire event, uh, where our sophomores in all three county schools came together, sent somebody, right? Someone they ate, and I know you were there, correct? Uh, the kids have come in and just, I don't think our kids actually know what all is out there. The first thing I always hear is like, I'm going away from here, I'm going to New York, California. Like it's, there's, there's solid jobs here and good jobs here. This is where you guys want to be and it's great. Uh, you guys can tell them stuff because you guys live in the real world and they're like, hey, Ken, listen, which is, which is good. Uh, but I know we started that probably about 10, 12 years ago. It's been great, uh, but I really appreciate that our kids do like it, um, do enjoy it. I know that Chelsea's class were here, they cook all the food and feed the kids, but it worked really well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Peter. Reports from the County Revenue Commission, that would be for me. And I was out of town at the last meeting. So, nothing to report. Communications for the public, you have anything? Next up is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Ross. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? There is none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Your business. Up first, we have the resolution to authorize the issuance of bonds and financial documents. So turn over to Jacob.
Hi, yes, uh, Jacob McClellan with Bose McKinney and Evans. Um, we're serving as your bond counsel. So I know we've been here, um, for several public hearings and approvals. The resolution before you is the final resolution for the authorization of the bonds. Um, it authorizes the bonds with the parameters provided by London Woody Group and Mezzaro. Um, it authorizes the offering document, bond purchase agreement, um, the continuing disclosure agreement and, um, all the closing documents necessary for the issuance of the bonds. As far as timing, um, we're talking, we have a rating agency called tomorrow. I suspect, uh, it'll be about seven to 10 days to receive the rating and then Mezzaro will release the offering document. And they'll probably take about seven days, um, before they price the bonds. Once the bonds are priced, that means your interest rate and your payments are all locked in. We'll, um, prepare as we have in the past. We'll fill in all the blanks on the documents, get signature packages to you all, uh, with funds available probably mid to late December for the project. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm good, you did a good job. Last time you were down, uncomfortable with all the taxes, bill of the bond.
Yeah, it's good, it's good, good thing.
Are you guys have anything? Um, I need a motion.
Some motion, sir?
Yeah.
The resolution. Make a motion to accept your resolution for authorizing the issuance.
Thank you, Ross. If there is no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Uh, motion carries five to zero. Do you need any signatures from us? Well, I'll probably leave.
You guys can keep going and I'll pass around the resolution and I'll be going with John and people.
Okay, so next up, um, for the guys that have been here through the in on the HVAC system, we are going to move it around so you guys can get help.
Yep. And I'm glad you guys showed up because I was really nervous today when I left my office and didn't have any. So thank you all for coming tonight. Not opening in any particular order, just how they're sitting right here in front of me. I'm sorry. Yes, sir. First one is Huntingbird Machine Works. Gents, what I typically do is just read the name and the base bid and then we're going to hand everything over to UDA and they'll go through them all and make sure that everything is, is, uh, responsive, okay? For part one, Huntingbird Machine is 575,000. You want me to just read the first one and then we'll deal with the add-ons later? How do you want to do that?
That's up to you, that's fine.
Okay. We'll read just the primary bid and then we'll go through them with, with everything else with UDA. So Huntingbird Mechanical, 575. Mel Kay is next, M-E-L-K-A-Y. And for the base bid, Mel Kay is at 527, 481. Up next, we have Mariger. Jasper. With a base of 537, even. Last but not least, HFI, out of Bloomington, Indiana. Harold Fish. With a base of 73685. Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Thank you guys. So understanding that that's just the tip of it, what we'll do now is we'll accept these as responsive bids. I'm going to hand those off to Jason at UDA. He will go through them all. So just because these numbers are what they are, doesn't mean anything right yet. Uh, we always let UDA go through them with a fine tooth comb and make sure they're where they need to be. So gentlemen, I do thank you very much for your interest in this opportunity. We, uh, look forward to moving forward in the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for going home.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, thanks so much. Jason, you had emailed me earlier, would you mind filling the board in with what we talked about with that?
Uh, about the, uh, controls side. So Aaron Hadson, Aaron is our mechanical engineer that did the design work on the project. He had a general comment that a few of the contractors, uh, we're having trouble getting the number for the controls side of things. Uh, just the wiring, reconnecting the units themselves. So one thing that I just mentioned for John is, you know, obviously we're going to go through the bids and make sure everything's there, but some of these numbers, it could be that we haven't technically seen all the alternates where the controls probably fall in. But it may be that some even the base bid, maybe for example, one of them doesn't have the controls as far as that. We don't know yet, but it's something that we're going to look at, make sure it's, uh, fully complete and/or if not, then we have to figure out, hey, what's missing? Is there an opportunity to reconcile it or what? So we just have to see what's there, but hopefully we've got something that everybody found a number, but that was just what we heard from the contractors themselves when we had this speaking.
Thank you.
We will, we will review it and determine if it's true.
We wouldn't have got four bids, we probably would have stopped it.
What's that?
That, if we wouldn't have, I was surprised we got four.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, we got four, I'm sure.
Yeah, I was nervous at six o'clock today when I didn't have any.
Yeah, I would say so.
It's four about the number of bids we need to get the budget, but the.
The first time we did a project like this was William Tell and we got one and that, and that was it.
So four is not bad.
So I'm happy to have four, yeah, absolutely.
We'll, like I said, all review, make sure they're complete and got all the information in there. The real story is going to come with the rest of the alternates as well. Obviously, from previous discussions, you've got a budget that we're going to try to meet. So those alternates will total up and kind of go from there and see what file falls in range of the budget, so.
Absolutely. All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? There's some noise here.
All right.
Thanks, guys. I thought I'd give them a chance to pick your rank before you snuck out.
Yeah, no problem.
Next up, William Tell Elementary.
We have a few recommendations for William Tell Elementary, an assistant secretary in Andrea Roberts, uh, on target supervisors, Chelsea Cole and Gracie Sin, and a site coordinator in Samantha DeJure. And we did get all those background checks in, meaning I have them if anybody wants to look at them. But I am recommending, or to prove these ladies as recommended.
On motion.
I make a motion to approve the William Tell as a group, William Tell representation as a group.
Any discussion on the candidate? There is none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Permission to release lawn care RFP.
So every two years, we solicit lawn care bids for the mowing and trimming of the grounds. Uh, we've updated the RFP and I've included it for your approval. With your approval, we'll release that. We'll have them due in, uh, towards the first of the year, review them all, accept one of the new, accept the bid, the winning bid, uh, in February and that group will take over or continue. and that group will take over or continue mowing starting March.
I have a motion.
Make a motion to release the lawn care.
Sure. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five.
We'll post that on the website, we'll put it out in the paper. Get it far and wide, make sure everybody knows of the document.
Overnight field trip.
Restlang is requesting to go on an overnight trip December the 5th and 6th to Knox County. This presents a need to, they're the night before, so they don't have to leave at 4:30 a.m. for their weigh-in. They'll take activity buses and stay at a hotel using fundraisers and donations. And we reminded them, of course, that we're in that time of year where it could snow and that might impact things like it did yesterday. So this would also be contingent on the weather. So ask for your approval on that trip tonight.
I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the overnight trip for the rest of the.
What, um, what's the purpose?
They have a meet there and if they left from here, it's 4:30 leave done. If that weigh-in's at eight or four.
Well, it's for, it's for wrestling.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
I think I've heard of this, I heard a rumor that they haven't decided for sure if they want to do this or if they're getting it in place. If they want to, they're planning to. This is, and this is rumors, it's not come from any reliable source. What if they decide not to travel? Did it any big deal to, do they have to notify in a certain manner?
No, the permission is for the overnight, if they don't go, then we just quit going. I hadn't heard that they were just throwing it out there, I assumed we were going to go here. Is this in the order? Because I don't remember north of us. Okay, okay.
This is a, that's why I said, Team State.
No, that's later, that's. December, January? Yeah.
Well, I think the location probably isn't set for Team State, is it? The location for Team State?
Uh, there is.
I don't.
Not that I know of.
I don't think so.
Well, it's usually called, you know, the last couple of days.
Through you.
Hannah, you were referring, this is, they're not 100% sure that they're going to, but they wanted to get this in just in case they needed to, they felt like they needed to, they wanted to go ahead and get proficient to do that.
Makes sense.
They're waiting till the line, or too late.
Yeah. Better to have permission and not need it.
Ross made a motion, discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Building use for the Mental Health Coalition.
Kevin Hurt reached out to us regarding use of the auditorium on the December 10th for a presentation on QPR and home training for the community. This is a suicide prevention program and then a counseling on access to lethal means or conversations for lethal means. It's suicide prevention focused on, you know, our veteran, the mental health of Perry County. So he would like to come in and do this presentation. He does hope to do more presentations like this going forward in the future. So I recommend that we allow him use for this presentation and as it is a community and a county initiative, that we waive those fees.
I have a motion.
Motion to approve the building use.
John explained what we're doing, is there any other discussion?
He did include, he had shared with me that information, I did put it in your packet, so if you had a question on the programming.
So not for profit, so. We need to ease.
Correct.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Ratification of the 2526 CBA.
For the 2526 collective bargaining agreement, we have come to the following agreements. And these have all been properly advertised and put on the website and TA'd and met and met and met. We will be raising base salary to $50,000 for a teacher with a bachelor's and no experience. If they have literacy endorsement, that would be $50,250. For our veteran returning teachers, a year of experience would get $600 and a evaluation of effective or highly effective would rate them $1,400. And by law this year, we had to include meeting the academic needs of the students. And for that, we are defining it as having the literacy endorsement on your, on your license at the time of the ratification of this contract. That is primarily an elementary mandate from the state. However, some of the special needs teachers at the senior high do have to do that also. We've also agreed to a one-time stipend of $500 for all qualifying teachers using the same compensation model to be distributed prior to January 5th of Christmas. Health insurance will remain at a 90-10 split between the corporation and the employees. We have modified the retirement language so that each sick day a teacher earns will be paid for, as opposed to having a $30 buyout, or a 30-day buyout first. And we have added one day to for re-rent. We have several union members here, if you have any questions with them. If not, I recommend that the board approve the 2526 CBA.
Right. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the ratification of the 2526 CBA.
Is there any other discussion? Guys work pretty well together, obviously.
They beat me up.
This, still, because our salaries, especially ours, are higher than most guest areas.
Yes.
Yes, all of us in Indiana.
We are very competitive, especially locally.
Even at Norty, some of the big schools were, I've read several articles, it was actually in our full board newsletter, they were boasting their 48, 47, 8, starting. That was up around Lafayette, when we get over, through those suburbs, which are, planes, those districts, their starting salary, $47,000, but our starting salary, $50,000. And I think all of our first-year teachers also have the literacy endorsements, so the teachers, the lowest paid will have is the $50,000, $50,000.
Correct.
That's pretty good compared to other schools. Yeah. That'd all work out for everybody.
Um, if nobody has any other discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Administration.
At this time, I am recommending that the administration receive the same $2,000 base pay increase that was for the certified staff, teachers staff.
Principal.
Yes.
This is for the whole school.
Yes.
Nope.
I think we have here is time to.
Fragile immigration.
We have to discuss mindset differently, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the $2,000 base pay increase for.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the increase, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Support staff.
Okay, this is a first read as we are updating support staff handbook, proposed 26 update. There are very few tweaks internally. The average teacher increase was 3%, and that's what I'm asking to apply to the non-cert handbook as a 3% increase to those folks. They vary, I mean, we have everything from, you know, $17 to, you know, salary folks at $65,000, $70,000, so. But I did include that salary schedule, best of the kind of questions. This is a first read on that, so we'll bring this back in December for approval and then it'll be effective January.
It varies, but the average raise of support staff gets 3%.
The 3% is the raise, yes. That's what the average raise for the certified staff was, so that's what I've recommended for the non-cert.
That's kind of what we've been.
It's what I've been trying to do, yeah. We appreciate everybody and what they do for us. We have a great staff and I'm happy to recognize it, just asking.
Why do we have to have a first read?
Because when we're changing the support staff handbook, we have to have that read and the review.
Oh.
It's the whole handbook, yeah, that gets modified. This also includes the new CNA position that you guys approved last time and then any kind of language change. So that's why it's a first read, it's kind of like a policy.
Neola.
Speaking of policies and first reads, we have Neola, volume 38, number one. This is a two-part update, it's number one, and there was a nondiscrimination update included. And I've included the synopsis for you guys to review. You guys all have the full policies available. Once again, this is first read, if you have any questions or something jumped out at you, we can discuss that now. If not, we'll be asking for your approval on that at the December hearing. Much of this is based on current state and federal legislation and initiative.
Mr. Shoda, have a lot of results on that?
There's definitely a lot.
Any other business that comes before the board?
I'd just like to say congratulations to the band, they did a great job. Looking forward to our winter sports gearing up, some of them are already going. But Thanksgiving's right around the corner and then it'll be Christmas and the next thing you know, we'll be graduating. Feels like it's going awfully quick. Came really close to using our first no day yesterday. Got the phone call at 5:30 in the morning, said, what are you doing? I said, I'm sleeping, what are you doing? They said, you better go outside. It was unbelievable when I pulled out on the highway and I couldn't see any lines, the road, anything. And then by nine o'clock, roads were clear, they were wet, they were clear. And most drivers poured in no problems, didn't have problems with anybody else, so. I love winter.
I think that day was just made for the two-hour delay and it worked out.
It did, it worked out very well.
Some schools went on schedule and had some problems. One very school.
It was all together and just, you know. It was uncanny, I called, I had a question for you. I called Brad Schneider over South Spencer. I said, what are you, what are you doing today? I was like, I'm going to school, my drives are clear, there's nothing happening here. So many people told me you crossed the Anderson River and it was like, nothing. So we just were lucky.
Right on the line.
Got hit with the line, so, yeah, so.
All righty, thank you all very much, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, lots to sign, mind you.
To sign.